I think that's the way we're gonna do it.
The head of the meeting, ladies and gentlemen, five o'clock time to start a meeting. Our elevator malfunction, so Mr. Smith's not gonna be up for a few minutes, so I'll call meeting order and we'll ask that everyone stand and I'll ask plans to stay in place.
Let's pray together. Our Lord, our heavenly Father, we're so grateful for this beautiful day which you've given us here in Kansas. Father, we're grateful for all the opportunities and blessings you bestow upon us. We're thankful, Father, that we have, in this community, the freedom to make the choices that we want to make. We're thankful, Father, for your love, we're thankful for your grace. Father, we ask that you be with all of us in this meeting, we ask that you guide us, we ask that you give us wisdom, knowledge, give us the courage to make the right decisions in life, not only in life, Father, but for each and every citizen in this community. Father, we ask that you give us safe passage home and forgive us of our sins when we fall short. We pray in the name of your beloved Son, Jesus, amen.
Amen.
May the Senate ask Russell Green if he will later be praised.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Present.
Here.
Karen Ashford, here.
Jim Bush.
Here.
Frank Hallway.
Here.
Glenn Stakely.
Present.
Clint Bush.
Here.
Reggie Conner.
Here.
Adam Melton.
Here.
Nine firsts and one after.
Adam Fives group appropriations for fiscal year two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen. Mark Ross is the chairman of the budget committee and I'll ask Jim to explain anything about that. The budget committee met, uh, twelve times? I think. Anyhow, we went over the appropriations for each district. Well, county general, annual service, solid waste, education debt service, and regular debt service. And, uh, each commissioner now has their latest one. The appropriations are the same as we came back with, I think, at the last budget committee meeting. We had a budget committee meeting and we came back to approve everything, and then there was a movement to change our fund balance, but that's all that we talked about at the last budget committee meeting was, how much to put in fund balance, is that not about right, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Fund balance is all we talked about, but other appropriations had already been, have been decided. So the, you got in front of you there, the budgets, if you'll turn the page. Page one, page two is the total. County general appropriations will be five million, two hundred and eighteen thousand. I'm just gonna round these off with a hundred thousand. Solid waste, five hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars. Animal service, a million, two fifty-nine. Road control fund, ninety-two thousand. Highway fund, three point six million. And the general purpose school fund is not in here because they haven't gotten theirs to us yet. They haven't totally approved theirs yet, but the care fund is a million, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand. General debt service, that's the four hundred and thirty-six thousand. And then the education debt service fund, seven hundred and four thousand. Those are the appropriations that we had voted on up until the last budget committee meeting. One announcement I was supposed to make, I asked W B R Y to, uh, video this and it'll be on their YouTube channel, and I correct with that, and W B R Y fifteen forty-eight. Anybody that's not able to be here tonight that wants to see it, uh, they can look on Facebook pages and we're going to do the roll call meetings and there tomorrow at eight to eleven after the roll call meetings. It'll be the entire meeting. There won't be just parts of it, it'll be the entire meeting. I appreciate Keith with W B R Y doing that. One thing I forgot too, Mark, I'm sorry about this, uh, relatively new and we were supposed to have a fifteen minute response, a public comment session there after the, or after the roll call and I just forgot it, so before there's any vote taken or anything, I'm gonna open for a fifteen minute panel and if anybody wants to speak to the commission concerning what's under the agenda tonight, they are, just recognize each individual's allowed three minutes.
Sir, Michael, is there none?
I don't know. What's that? Can you not hear me?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. We have a public comment period for fifteen minutes, and if anyone wants to speak to the commission concerning appropriations or the tax rate, we allow three minutes per person. Does anyone want to speak to the commission? Okay. Yes?
Where am I supposed to speak?
Right where you're standing, just stand up.
My name is Russell Johnson, I'm a coming resident, and I'm very concerned about the pending tax increase that we're facing. I think it's only appropriate to find out before we hit a tax increase where our tax dollars are being spent and whether they're being spent wisely. That said, I would request you certain information. How many employees does Cannon County pay? What departments are they assigned? How many hours do they work per week? What are their primary duties? How much are they paid per week? What benefits do they receive and at what cost? Additionally, how many vehicles does the county own or pay to operate? What departments are they assigned? What are they used for? How many miles are they driven in a year? How many miles of that sort of personal use? Who is the primary driver and what's the cost per year to operate? Also, how many cell phones are paid for by the county? Who are they assigned and what percentage of their use is personal? I know that the county has previously, the board has previously received some breakdowns of how Cannon County expenses compare to other counties of reasonable like size, and Cannon County seems to be overspending compared to our neighbor counties on virtually every item. So before we start talking about increasing taxes, I think it's prudent that we see what we've already spent. I assume that the county commissioners and the budget commission have already looked at this information. I have not seen it made public anywhere, so I'm requesting that be made public and get this to the board.
Yes, my name is Donna Davis, and I'm really concerned about the tax increase that I've been told is gonna be trying to be placed on the land tax owners. I'm desperately concerned about that, that is a big expense that all the taxpayers, the landowners have to pay, not everybody else. There has to be other revenues that can be took and sought instead of putting it all on the people that own land. It's not fair to the people that own land to have to pay for all the income. I think that there's other, there was supposed to be money brought off of all the beer and whiskey and the liquor taxes, all this that come in our county that was supposed to help our county. I don't see where that's going. There's a sanctuary up on Short Mountain that these people come in and go to during different times of the year. It looks like to me that they could have to pay some kind of fine to come in here to go to that sanctuary. If I go on vacation somewhere, I had to pay, they need to pay to come into this county. There's other revenues that can be sought instead of putting it all on the land tax owners, and I really wish that y'all would take that into consideration because we are taxed to death. Thank you.
Now, to answer your question, you were talking about beer, alcohol, whiskey and so forth.
Yes, sir.
It stays in the city. The commission has seen fit not to expand that out in the county, so the city gets all the benefit for Sunday beer sales and so on. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Karen Melton, and, you know, I'm also concerned with this tax increase. What is your cutoff date for the elderly? What advantage or disadvantage are you doing to them? They can't live on six hundred or a thousand dollars a month. What are you gonna do? You just want all the elderly people to leave? Is that what you want for your mother and fathers or grandmother and grandfather? I don't. Y'all may find a way to control your spending. That's it, that's the bottom line. Quit coming in here every July and June, wanting more money. I mean, we're not idiots, we know it's going somewhere, we wanna know where it's going. This is enough. Quit spending money that we don't have. It's just that simple. Think about your elderly people. Think about your same parents. It's not all two-income families in this county. Y'all need to vote before you vote.
Anyone else? Yes?
My name's Kevin James, I owned Cannon County for a couple of years, but I've been watching the rest of the politics around the country. Seems to be a pretty disturbing way of doing things, the way these counties, local, state, federal, walk taxpayers and put the bill to the government. Some of us work ten, twelve hours days, six days a week to pay the bills. Fifty-five percent tax increase on my income, that's pretty sizable. I don't appreciate it. I'm not gonna have a retirement right now. That's the way it is. I also don't wanna fund somebody else's retirement. So if you guys need to take some money out of the county's retirement fund to pay for this, maybe you should do that. Benefits, health insurance, other things like that, that I don't have, that I have to pay a thousand dollars a month just to get for my family. This is the only county that's doing this. From what I understand, this bill for this tax increase is gonna make Cannon County the highest taxed county in Tennessee, above Knoxville, Nashville, Cleveland. That's ridiculous. We don't have a lot of decent, good-paying jobs in this county. From what I understand, I have to drive all the way to Rutherford for a good job. So I'm kind of at wits end, and I'm sure a lot of people, well, or two, that don't wanna speak, that don't know what's going on. And I'm new to politics, to be quite honest with you. But I don't like what I see, I don't like what I hear. And this is going on all across the country. What I hear is a lot of saber rattling. You get tired of the federal government, the state government, local government taking control of money that other people work hard for and giving it to people who don't put in on top of that. So if there is money that can be absconded from something else, that's where things come from. And I will be looking more into this as, you know, as it arises, 'cause I'm kind of concerned about it. I just heard this from a friend of mine, so that's why I'm glad. God bless you all, I wish you all luck.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I wanna know why the eighteen thousand dollars that the REACH program owes is run out? Was that not taxpayer money?
That, uh, that, the answer to that, that was held over year after year, and it was written off because we no longer have the REACH program. There's no REACH program to pay that back. It went over, it didn't go over eighteen thousand in a year, it went over, you know, a thousand here and a thousand there. And, uh, once we get, I guess you could say gave the school bowl and the REACH program, there's no REACH program to pay it back.
Was that part of the eighteen thousand dollars that Angela squandered?
No.
Is she still paying that?
I don't have no idea, we got all our money through the interest. I have no idea, that's before her interest, I don't know.
If we got all our money back, how do we still write off eighteen thousand dollars? The next thing, what, like, let me finish up the questions. We've sat in here the last year and what, y'all voted to cut. On the next week, or the next budget meeting or the next meeting, you'll come back and reinstate the budgets as a cut. Nobody sticks to their stories sitting there at the table, man, at the same time, and you know I'm telling the truth. Because you go back twenty minutes and find them. When you vote for something, you can't change mine thirty minutes later. You gotta stick to what you voted for. If you vote to cut the pool out out here, you keep it cut out till you can get it regulated. If you vote to cut something out, you cut it out. I get tickled. Jim said there with the county, the city gets all the tax revenue from the beer sales. I really get upset about that. This is the most people I saw in this room in the last year since the beer border meeting. We got concerned because we're getting our bill vote. Everybody's getting concerned because the tax money's getting our bill vote down. Everybody gets concerned. Why do you complain when a store wants to sell beer out of county? I know you go to church on Sunday and you think they're good Christian worshippers, but when you sit at tables and mislead people, it's just like lying. There's no difference in drinking a beer and misleading people on what you're representing. If you find it different, can you come and explain it to me so I'll understand it? Because money comes from us hardworking people. I understand the school system wants more money. Where are you gonna get to keep getting the money from? Where are you gonna get the money from every year? I'm not talking to one individual in here, I'm talking to all elected officials. The elected officials in here are supposed to be working for the people of Cannon County. They're not supposed to be working for our teachers, they're not supposed to be working for the people that they've worked under them, they're supposed to be working for the people of Cannon County and getting us the most for the least. If you don't think that's so, ask the other people in other counties. You shouldn't ever stand up here and tell the teachers you're gonna go get them another raise, or you're gonna go get them this. It's your job to negotiate and get the least for the most.
Thank you, Father. Anybody else?
Yes, I'm taking things, and I'm here to represent my neighbors. They're really upset about this high tax increase, it's gonna really, really hurt. It is, you all need to get your money budgets in order. Everybody is upset.
Thank you, Freddie.
I wanna know why we keep building more things, like the health department and all this stuff, when we're in debt? I can't build something if I owe money and I can't pay it, and I can't pay for it. I don't understand that, I think the money has been mishandled. Why is our taxes more than anybody's in the state? That's ridiculous, nobody here makes much money. There's no industries here. And most of the people that's moving into this county, I don't even know half of them, and I guarantee you, a lot of them do not work, and they don't pay taxes on anything. It's just very frustrating for us hardworking people to try to meet this standard. I don't know what we're gonna do. Do y'all want us to sell our farms and move? I mean, we might have to. I don't think it's funny, not one bit.
I'll answer that, and then I've got a gentleman back there. The health department's a hundred percent ready.
Now, grants have to be met, you have to come up with half the money or all of the, or a hundred percent of the money.
Well, it's still our federal government that's having to pay for it, I think it's ridiculous. Cannon County didn't need it, another county would, that's, you know, it's not helping Cannon County even to furnish it, they're giving the money to furnish it.
Not all grants are that way, though, a lot of them have to grant, you have to meet.
Most grants are max, you're right.
Yeah, you have to meet them, so when we get a grant for something, we gotta come up with the money to pay half the grant back.
Usually it's either twenty-eighty, max, or fifty, but this one was a hundred percent.
But still, twenty-twenty, fifty-fifty, adds up to two million dollars?
But my point, the health department is not bad, it's a hundred percent ready.
Well, okay, not the health department, but all the other grants. I, I, people are not stupid, we're figuring out what's going on and.
If you don't have the money. Something crazy.
Randy Melton, my question is, is why ain't nobody in this county interested in getting industry in here? I know people have tried to come, and everybody's voted out. Other counties are bringing industry in here, in the land, in the tax rates, just to get them in here so they can spend more and get more out of people, but I don't think the people here are interested in that. And another thing is, if you look at this county, over half of the landowners, as far as, you know, alley my area, are in the green belt. Well, your tax is not gonna touch them. I know two sitting right up front owe more than twenty acres, and they're going in the green belt. So you can't touch the green belt, but you're gonna tax the homeowners and the people that just don't think, because you're not gonna bother the landowners in the green belt because that's state. Now, this is not fair. Now, if you can put another tax on them to make them equal to us, I might be satisfied. I believe that'll change some of them's vote. If they have to pay it because their land is in the green belt and state don't let them bother, but you can't raise green belt taxes, my understanding. So my point is, somebody needs to be working with this county, get industry in here, and try to get things going so that we don't have to ask. And another thing is, I have called the gentleman and asked for everything, because we need to know where our tax dollars are going from. If you give me a hundred thousand dollars and you said, I wanna know where it is, I've got the right to know, you got the right to know where I spend that money. You do it at the bank, when you borrow it, they wanna know where it's going. If we're paying taxes, we wanna know where the money's going. As far as that, you health department, I understand you got a grant, and I understand it's a hundred percent, what I was saying last time. But there's still gonna be a light bill, and there's gonna be a water bill that's put on the county for the county to pay. We're growing. I don't understand who's gonna pay it. You gonna up something else? People need to look at this and look at it hard, because you need to run this county like a business. If you can't run it as a business, you got no business setting around that table. That's exactly what we want.
Okay, fifteen minutes is set, we'll move on now.
I'd like to say, please, I'd like to say.
Yes, ma'am.
I think what everyone has said has been really good, and everybody should take it to heart. But I don't see how, I do think there is a problem with too much going to the city. And I think the city sometimes holds the county back. I won't elaborate on that. But I will have to say to all of you elected officials, I don't see how you can live with yourselves and pass this property tax.
One more.
All right, my name's Ethan Curtis, most of you probably know me, but I used to work for the sheriff's office. I'm a recent homeowner, I just closed town. You look at people my age, and most people don't give me time of day because they think, well, he's young, he don't know. All right, I've sat and talked to two of you whenever it come to election time, and one in particular of you told me, if you vote for me, I will not raise property taxes. Not only have you done it once, you're gonna do it again, okay? Now, as a new homeowner, and I've purchased some land, I will be in the green belt, sir, but I am not yet, okay? There's no incentive for anybody my age to buy property here. I drive thirty-eight miles one way to go work, and that's because I couldn't afford anything better in my life working here. So whatever you're gonna do with this money, if you vote to pass it, you need to work for the people here that work here, live here, instead of lining the pockets of whoever is getting them lined. Because, I mean, I give up my dream job working here to help my county to go work in a different county. How many people sitting in this room do you think works in this county? Not very many. So something to think about, you don't have any jobs for people my age, you're not given any incentive for anybody my age to live here, build here, or anything. So something to think about.
Mike, can I make one clarification on what Jim said a minute ago?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Jim said all the beer tax stays in the city. Jim's right, with what is spent in the city, stays in the city. But there are three package stores out in the county, and all that goes in the county. Wholesale beer tax, I'm going back to actual numbers, this is fifteen and sixteen years. Wholesale beer tax is sixty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars, that's one item. The beer barrelage tax, same year, was twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars. Alcohol beverage tax is a mixed drink tax, there is none sold in Cannon County, except maybe in the city. That is a tax that the state puts on that all ninety-five counties share, and that was thirty-three thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars. And that's just a clarification on what Jim said there.
Thank you, Russell.
And the sales tax that is spent in the city does stay in the city. My understanding is, since the schools, the city does not have its own school system, a portion of that goes to our county school system, I believe, I don't know if that can be a hundred percent fact. I don't know the percentage.
Fifty-fifty percent.
Fifty percent. But basically what Jim said, what is spent inside the city does stay inside the city coffin. That's, I just wanted to clarify that.
It's bought in the county, it's, the tax goes to the county consultant states. I think what Russell's saying is by the beer.
Maybe the city needs to furnish some of this tax then and help pay some of this tax.
Mike, can I press that?
Yes, ma'am.
The city pays county tax and city tax, they pay county tax just like the people out there.
How much land do they have, though?
Let's move on now.
Can I make one more comment? Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Look, we tried two times to put the sales tax to the people, we're low on our sales tax, county and city, and I, and as Russell said, if you buy something, the local offer sales tax in the city, I have a big goes to the schools. Two times the voters voted down the sales tax, it was lower a dollar less than Walmart in Rutherford County, a dollar less than.
A penny.
A penny. Yeah, a penny, a dollar, a penny less than Rutherford County, a penny less than other counties. So it was voted down two times. Yeah, a penny, yeah. A dollar, a penny less than Grover County, a penny less than other counties. So it was voted down two times. The bookkeepers at the county, the school system, and the highway department, all their funds are audited by the auditors from state of Tennessee. If anybody is getting any money that they shouldn't get, they're gonna get caught, just like the one that you talked about, because they are audited. And that, that one that got caught, our insurance paid off what she had taken, taken out of it. And then she's paying that insurance company so much money. Now, that's between her and that insurance company. Is the, is the county tax assessor in the audience. The tax assessor can, she can explain the green belt, but the green belt is the same tax rate that everything else gets. If we raise the tax rate, the green belt gets it also. They say the same tax rate on green belts as you pay on everything else. A house, a residence pays tax on 25% of assessed value. Those, those figures are coming from the state. The green belt, when, when prices of the things that are grown on green property go up, the green belt formula goes up. Where's Donald Preston? Is he in here? He's...
He's put out of the text.
Donald's not here either. Either one, the, the tax assessor can explain that stuff to you if you want to learn about how that works. The tax assessor, or even Donald Preston, who's been a tax assessor for 20 years, he could explain it. But to say that the green belt, this tax increase doesn't get it. Right here, standing. It was, it was stated that the green belt, if we raise taxes, the green belt...
My tax goes up from there.
That's right. There's, there's a tax assessor right there.
Yes, it does.
It goes up just like everybody else. That, that, somebody's told you something that they didn't know what they're telling.
Well, let me ask you a question. You know what my tax rate's gonna be? Is mine the same as yours?
Yes.
What was on the living mark? Ask Angela. Could she pay the same tax?
The same tax rate, yes.
On, on the whole farm?
They say...
On the whole farm?
They say because they pay on use value instead of market, but it's the same tax rate.
But it's a cheaper rate?
It is a cheaper rate.
It's not one pay, it's cheaper pay?
No, it's a cheaper, if you have... It's a cheaper assessment.
Fifteen acres?
It has to be in fifteen acres.
If you have 15 acres or more, you should have your land in green belt. Unless you're planning on, uh, developing it in the next two or three years and selling off our houses, it should be in green belt. That's good for the state of Tennessee.
It's terrible for K D K. But if you're explaining about the county, the auditor, state, Tennessee, Russell, last year, said we did not have a revenue problem. We had a spending problem. They're trying to convince us that we need to raise our taxes with all we got, a spending problem.
I'm not gonna vote to raise taxes as much as it's...
It don't matter where you raise it, fuck any, or a damn.
All right.
They didn't get into appropriations.
He was in the room though when we actually made the proposal to not raise taxes. And there was three of us voted for it and to keep taxes the same and, and do some extensive cuts.
And nobody wouldn't vote for it.
Exactly. He wasn't in the room and you don't know.
They wouldn't vote for it. They were, but three of them voted for it, right?
So you know exactly how we got to this.
You're exactly right. And now they set up a party and convince us that it's best interest for us to raise the taxes. If you'll raise, raise the call and get us out of the problem.
Well, I've got some information and I've run by the state. Anyway, let's talk about appropriations.
Hold on, wait a minute. Hold on. We're not ready. We're not ready.
We're talking about item number five, approved appropriations. Now, let's discuss that.
All right. Now, ladies and gentlemen, I'm, I'm gonna just put it to you as much as I can. Mr. Stinkle here, he has just, he has picked this apart. He can tell you where we are right now and where we're going, which, uh, Mr. Stinkle, Brent, Mr. Paul Morgan and I, we've been over figures and figures and figures. My wife back there, I've stayed up at night going through all this stuff. And if you just give us some time, let Mr. Stinkle, you can go ahead and tell him where we're at. Thank you. We're in a mess. But tell us, tell us where our expenses are. Okay. We, all right. As of this last year, through Mr. Stinkle's figures, we overspent $118,362.
Over the previous year.
Over the previous year. We didn't even come close to coming through our budget line. Okay? Now...
That's almost six cents a property tax. Divide it by $20,000.
Yeah.
Every penny brings in $20,000. That's the math right there. We overspent six cents a property.
I thought Glenn said at the last meeting that we had spent less than we spent last year.
Did he say the last meeting?
He was here.
Now, there were one, the last year.
Let's talk about what was approved as appropriations.
Now, what we've got now, it's really shocking. Even though when we went over $118,000, we're looking at increasing that another $313,000.
We're at.
In this budget.
The one that was handed out at five o'clock.
What, the park?
Multiple across the park.
Multiple the park. It's not the courthouse because they've probably been cut it. The only thing the courthouse went up is state mandated rates. Where's it at, Jim?
It's everywhere, just put it.
You won't say where it's at. Now, let's see.
Well, you know.
How did we overspend $100,000 when everybody took a 2.58% cut?
That's a good question.
That's what I'm asking, uh, where that figure comes from.
I think it's called amendments. When you, when you find a plane and building at the same time, you're running these problems.
Who approved your budget amendment?
The mayor says, "Come in, chairman."
Yes, sir.
Just the, the budget that was handed out at five o'clock, this, I believe it came from...
That was based on, that was based on what the budget committee told Diane to run, the $1.45?
Yes, sir. Here, yes, sir. Here. Expenses, projected expenses for 16, 17, $4,904. Four, four, $4,900, $4,904,846. The projected expenditures for 17, 18, $5,218,127. Now, that calculation is $313,000 overspending what we're gonna project to spend this past year.
Where is it at? That's my question.
Well, there, it's in the, it's in the budget that was just handed out. It's the bottom line. He's just handed out at five o'clock.
Well, let's talk about appropriations. Don't, I said, but let's talk about appropriations and then I'll get into some figures that I have.
Now, ladies and gentlemen, also, bear with it. We sat here the other night. We had an option. Brent, Mr. Morgan and I made a motion that any unnecessary or required spending would be cut. If we done this, it would bring our numbers in line.
If you close down the amendments and agree to the other things. Now, who wants to have a heart attack and not have amendments?
But I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, this, you know, we were offering to do cuts that we're not required to. Okay. But it never was entertained in the meeting or it never was being willing to discuss about other options to be cut.
But the same one.
So then I told, I said, "All right, if y'all don't want a cut or whatever, it's gonna take $1.50 to get us out of here." Now, that come from the state comptroller's office. A dollar fifty. That came from you.
No, it come from the comptroller.
I wanna read it. I have it in writing also.
You made that, but you made that both...
I made the motion.
All right, everybody listen one at a time.
Now, we have, as far as the state's concerned, we need a million dollars floating at all times, even, and this has to sit there. The other monies that you have, that's what pays to run the county. All right? We're borrowing a million dollars every year. Okay? Now, this is the $1.50 what I'm talking about. Okay? With no cuts. This, this is where all this come out. Then you had $400,000, $400,000 that was earmarked, but you couldn't touch it, it didn't happen. Which is litigation tax that was spread out between the courthouse, the sheriff's office, uh, judges salaries, and so on. The $400,000 ain't there. Right now, it ain't there. So in order, in order to keep us a million dollars as the state wants us to, to keep us from spending a million, to bring our $400,000 back in the earmarked monies that is there as part of litigation tax, and to run the county, that's where the dollar in the hives was coming from. This is what it's going for. And then on top of that also, my stipulation was that the monies other than the million dollars that sits in that general fund, it was sundown, it cannot be touched, but then after this year, then it goes back to the regular tax rate it was when we first started. If it goes to a sundown, it'll happen. Now, but like I said, that was the two options. That was the two options. Nobody didn't want a cut. There was a third option. What was the third option? Todd Howard said, "Let's raise it 30 cents."
Inclusion taxes.
Well, let's raise the taxes.
That, that wouldn't, it's less than a dollar and a half over.
Just 60 cents over two years.
How much have we...
Twenty-two cents.
Okay, 22 plus third.
I'm just telling you there was a third option voted on. I'm just, I'm not...
Y'all are arguing the next slide, but you need to be arguing about the appropriations.
That's right.
Well, let's talk about the next slide. We got to talk about the appropriations. Appropriations are first. Do you want to approve the appropriations recommended by the budget committee? That's the question before you do something.
If the discussion is over, is the discussion over up here about the appropriations?
Could somebody tell us what the appropriation made of?
The appropriations is everything that you're gonna spend for everything. Everybody.
How many dollars is it?
$313,000 increases.
How much?
$313,000 increase up last year.
That's right.
That's an increase.
Yep, that's an increase. All right, I've got some up here. 120 of it is at the sheriff's department, 60 of, jail. 120 is at the jail, 60 is in the sheriff's office, $75,000 for the rescue squad truck, and $55,000 for, uh, two more.
Rescue truck was put in last year.
Two more it was, but it never, it never get paid. Those buses didn't get paid.
Wait a minute now. We're getting confused.
That's on that bottom line that you're talking about. All right, what we have, you spend it.
We've got state mandated rates. I'm not sure what they are.
I can say, I can tell you.
There's nothing we, just a minute. Wait a minute, Vince, please. There's none, uh, there's nothing we can do about that. You have, I'll pay, hang on just a minute. That's somewhere. You have $210,023 and you spend it at the sheriff's office and state mandated rates. To fund this and nothing else, don't worry about the fund balance, it'll take seven cents to fund the overall budget, but it takes 10 cents to fund the increase at the sheriff's office. So that means, wait a minute, that means you're taking three cents out of everybody else plus seven increase. And I'm not saying they don't need it. They're written up every time because they don't have enough chapters. That's the higher forward chapters. You've got $210,023 and you spend it at the sheriff's office plus state mandated rates. That's your increase.
Glenn's got state mandated rate, right? Tell them what it is.
27,000, well over 27,000 state mandated.
But that's not, that's not the one that's...
But let's be perfectly honest and tell the crowd everything's going on. That's where the increase is at.
We've got a little bit in going in the habit search too.
You got one cent is $20,000, but you collect three cents a year, or two cents a year or two ago. So you're still behind what you were a year or two ago. Jan?
I just want to ask the sheriff one question. Uh, how much did that baby cost us? Nothing.
Good judge, your latest turn just before she had.
Congratulations.
Good judge. Okay, let's talk about appropriations now. Does anybody, any commission, uh, love to comment, it's supposed to be over, but I'm gonna allow one exception. Grant, you want to say something?
Yeah, I just have one question. And that is, is, is a million dollar fund balance state mandated?
No, but that's what they want.
They want you to...
Well, actually, they want you to do a lot of things. A million fold.
Five years.
A million fold. But we got five years to do it. Now, I've got a history of this.
One of those is behind us now.
We got one year, y'all. We got four more years.
We got four more years. We've been moving in that direction. Okay, Grant. We're running the ground.
Four more years after this year. When this budget closes, whatever our fund balance is, we got four more years to do it, according to, according to county audit. Now, commissioners, y'all need to work on this, uh, appropriations.
Why was that one rate then?
You got, uh, because, I don't know. I wasn't at the budget meetings. Uh, I think somebody told me that it was...
Because they were gonna be $40,000 in a hole and we raised a penny to get, get up there where there wouldn't be a hole.
They cut some and then we, we cut them some and then...
We raised charges.
Raised a little bit of charges. And he's working on raising the charges more, but you can't do those things just in them.
What's, what's the capital outlay? Fund balance because it was against the budget policy.
You're right, Paul, yeah. We, they needed, abide the budget hospital that already passed.
What's the two seats for more in capital outlay?
On, and... That's for... Is that heart monitors or... Oh, yeah, that's a new, that's a new...
That's a dead service.
But they'll be paid out of dead service.
Yes, but it's, capital outlay under land land.
But, uh, I, I saw Justin has somewhere. He can tell you. Do you know what that's for? I guess something about using those cars, carts that, where the employees don't have to lift them and heart monitors and different things is... These are our emphasis for stretches for the animals is that the state has now mandated, any new animals purchased, they have to have that emphasis. And I think a new animals. Am I right?
Right. Yeah, there's a new animals.
I think a new animals.
We got one with...
But we've raised the billing 5% also.
Yeah, he's bringing in, they're bringing in on Monday, you said.
Back to the appropriations, the four things that I named right there totaled $310,000. The sheriff's department, the jail, the two cars and the two, and the rescue squad truck.
And there's four of them.
Yeah, there's two more in the growth fund, right? Yeah, that's right.
Mr. Chairman, you have to have increased the practice also.
That's true. Yes, that's right. That was increased, but I'm just, those big ones total $310,000. We're going, the, the county's gonna be reappraised this year as we get, takes more employees to do that. I make a motion, $20,000 for another election. That's right. The Republican Party said, I told the election commission, they were gonna, they were gonna have a primary. We saw the election commission came to us and said, "Well, we've got to at least have the $20,000 in our budget if we don't have to spend it." Uh, Matt Tepley's not gonna spend money, but he doesn't need to spend it. He did a good job last year. But we had to put it in there just in case. So that's another $20,000. It's, it's in there.
But just because you got money in the budget don't mean you're gonna spend it if you're, if you're managing. If there's a primary, we'll have to spend it. If there isn't, we won't. All right, do I, do I have a motion on appropriations?
I make a motion.
Motion made to approve appropriations as presented by the budget committee. Do I have a second?
I don't think you require that second by Robert Drew.
You, you require that second on a motion unless it's a nomination.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make, okay, uh, Brent Bush second motion. We'll call it up.
Martin Burke?
Yes.
Russell Reed?
No.
Karen Adams?
Yes.
Jim Bush?
Yes.
James Holloway?
Yes.
Lynn Stickley?
Lynn Stately?
I have, I have problems with the appropriations today like I did during the budget periods. And I, I have to vote no.
Brent Bush?
Black Glenn and I have a lot of problems with the, the lack of homework. And, uh, don't be, I graduated high school here in eighty-one. Retired from the army in two thousand and eleven. I know a little bit about this problem. But since we, uh, for some reason or another, can't do the necessary cuts, a hard question, and I'm a landowner, I vote yes.
Ricky Hunter?
Yes.
Adam Mel?
Yes.
Three, seven, four, two again.
Okay, we'll move on to item six, and that's to set the, uh, tax rate to finance the appropriations. But now, if you'll bear with me, everybody's got an opinion, everybody has a right to an opinion. But I wanna tell you at this point, everything that I'm about to say and every figure I'm about to give you was discussed with county audit. Diane and I have worked on this for two weeks. And I heard a dollar forty-four, I said, "We gotta do something." So we worked on it for two weeks, and we've met with county audit. They've been to our office. And I'm going, uh, I wanna explain where four misconceptions that people have.
Can you let me say one word for a second? The budget meeting though, that, it came out from the dollar forty-nine. Y'all, y'all made the motion for a dollar fifty, right? And we...
Thirty-seven plus seven, let's keep it clear.
Well, no, first, the first one, the first one, the first one.
Anyone in the audience needs to be recognized before this thing.
That's right. But he's on the budget committee, he's...
And he's not a commissioner.
The, uh, the first motion was a dollar and a half raised, and then it was whittled down to a dollar forty-four. That's, that's after two hours of meeting.
So you're saying that I didn't, I didn't make, you asked me to make a motion and I made a motion to to do all, only do necessary spending?
Yes.
And unnecessary cuts? And what, that didn't go in there?
That didn't go in there. Because the fire, fire departments and stuff like that are, they're not mandated.